Well, welcome back, everyone. This is the Board of Education meeting for Monday, March 22 of 2021. We have been in closed session for the last hour. Charlie, if you can call the roll.
Mr. Roach?
Here.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Roby?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Westphal?
Present.
Mr. Kerberg?
Here. We have a quorum. If you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all very much. All right. Moving down to item three on our agenda, communications. 3.02 is President's comments. A couple of things to begin with this evening. The first is just a comment that, a few comments that I'd like to make on behalf of the Board of Education. I wanted to speak about the recent violence that was committed against Asian Americans, most specifically what occurred around Atlanta. It is heartbreaking to once again be talking about violence committed against a community of color or a certain ethnicity or race in America. District 202 is categorically opposed to bullying or discrimination or violence of any kind. We recognize that unfortunately, it is in the world, and the world comes into our schools. We have done many things to protect our students, including creating special email and phone hotlines, increasing and improving our social emotional resources for students and families, and creating a cultural competency committee, which we just spoke about last month's meeting, to look at equity at a district-wide and building level. District 202 remains committed to ensuring the safety of our students and staff and providing equity to everyone who works or learns or visits our schools and facilities, regardless of race, ethnicity, life experience, or background. And so, again, just want to talk about and reiterate to the community how violence has no place in society of any sort, and we abhor what did take place last week and band with those in solidarity to work to end that type of violence across our community here and across our country. Read recently that there were over 3,800 acts of violence against Asian Americans in the last year, since March of last year, and again, that just really cannot continue. You know, we've been a nation plagued by this for some time, and you know, we need to find ways to come together and move beyond and find common ground. So with that, would also like to turn our attention to the fact that the next board meeting is on April 12, which does fall after the next election, which is on April 6. We want to remind and encourage everyone to vote, whether that is early voting, by mail, or in-person at the polls on April 6. State and national elections tend to get the majority of the attention, but it is certainly our local governments, which includes our schools, parks, libraries, counties, and municipalities, that really affect our day-to-day lives. With that in mind, we remind the community to watch the video of the online forum that the CAPE organization hosted last month with all nine board candidates. Take the opportunity to get to know the candidates. A video of that event is still posted on the front page of our district's website. There are four Board of Education seats up for election. And we do want to extend a thank you to CAPE, parent organization, for organizing and hosting this event once again, that they do every year, especially under these challenging circumstances, where it took a lot more effort and planning to put that on this year than it does in other years or has in other years. You know, it would be really wonderful if we had even more of those types of events hosted by other organizations in the community. So kudos to CAPE for still making that a priority to get that accomplished this year. And again, take time to get to know the candidates and take advantage of your civic opportunity and vote in the election on April 6. All right, so that is all I have. We do not have student ambassadors this evening, so moving on to item 4.01, board salutes. Does anyone have anything for this evening?
I don't.
All right, so we do not have any special recognitions either, so jumping on down to item 5.01 is public comment. And as we have shared in the past, and will share once again, District 202's protocol and procedure is to allow up to two minutes per comment and up to 20 minutes total for public comment, subject to the Board President's discretion. We have received for this meeting 29 public comments in total since the February 27 board meeting. To avoid any suggestion of impropriety, editing, or et cetera, Director of Community Relations, Tom Hernandez, will read each email. He'll read these in a timestamped order that they were received up to 5:00 p.m. today. He'll read them word for word minus appropriate redactions, and subject to the stated time limits for each comment and for public comments overall, which as a reminder again, is two minutes per comment, not to exceed 20 minutes total. And all public comments have also been shared with each member of the Board of Education and will be posted on the district's website as part of the information for this meeting, with appropriate redactions to remove personal email addresses and names or information identifying specific students or staff. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Hernandez.
All right, sir. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right. First comment tonight then is from Lara Hamilton. Both my kids finally had their first day of in-person school today. That was on February 22. We have been hoping for a return to school much sooner. My daughter got in the car after school and said, "This was the best day of school ever in my life." Tonight, my son, who is not as animated as my daughter, said, "Today at school was the best day of my life since COVID started. I was shocked, since I knew school with masks and social distancing would be very different for them, but it just proved to me that children need to be in school, not only for the academics, but for their mental health and social growth. School Board, as this point, I plead to you. Please make decisions in the best interest of the students and look at the total picture. I'm so glad you're offering choices for in-person or remote school, but we know that they can be in school safely more than seven hours per week. You have the ability to make this happen. Other districts and many private schools have shown it's possible. It's the responsibility of all of you to make this happen and to offer this to your students. In your position, I would hope you are working tirelessly to make this happen, including meeting with other districts and schools that are doing back-to-school successfully and learning their plan. I shouldn't have to beg for my children to be able to get an in-person education in the United States. Many of us feel like our pleas and emails are falling on deaf ears. At this point, I am begging you to let our children go to school more days, at the minimum four days per week. This goal should be safe and feasible. Please think of the best interests of the children." Next was from Suzanne Johnkey. I'm directing this comment straight at the board members. I watched yet another school board meeting last night, and where not one board member said anything regarding the return plan. No questions to Dr. Abril, no concerns expressed about the students, nothing. Complete silence. Are all of you really okay with the fact that a year into this debacle, we still have no plans to return all kids to full-time learning? That we're waiting for survey results to figure out what we can do? That we've shackled ourselves to following the CDC recommendations, even though they are just that, recommendations, not rules? I hope you all listen carefully to the words in the oath as our new board member was sworn in, to remind yourselves of what your duties are, because right now, you seem to have forgotten what you were sworn to do. Your job is not to sit silently and watch as our kids' education is destroyed by this administration. Your job is to speak up, advocate for the students in our district, and demand this administration find a way to make it work, five full days for all who want it. Other districts in this state and around the country are making it work. Why is it plainfield? Do your job you were elected to do." Next is from William Bass. Starting with the board member who made the comment about babysitters when this all started, why have none of you resigned? You have all demonstrated that the children's education is your last concern. You continue to make bad decisions as you pour money into a new school and then name a principal when school is barely in session. You allow for the purchase of the wrong laptops, which have been plagued with problems. You allow second graders to self-teach because you cannot provide adequate subs and aides while testing is going on. Testing that will most likely show that remote learning doesn't work for most, and our children are falling behind. Other school districts around us are showing it can be done while you hide in private Zoom meetings, making poor choices." Next is from Eric Olvera. I was told by Mr. Winters to contact you, meaning me, since you are compiling parents' feedback on returning to school. My wife and I received the email from the school regarding the fourth quarter choice of returning, and my family and I were very disappointed. Therefore, I wanted to share my opinion regarding the only choice given to parents, which is for children to go the fourth quarter for half-days or online. It is especially concerning that the children are still mostly going online to school. I believe that online school is not a good way for children to learn, and it is affecting them in many ways. Many parents agree with me, and I personally see how the last year of online schooling has affected my child's well-being socially, mentally, as well as my child's learning. I think that my child's motivation to learn is also falling back as the online schooling continues. My child used to love to get up and go to school. My wife and I completely understand all the concerns with COVID, but to our understanding, the science isn't supporting that there are big outbreaks at schools or private schools would be not continue with the in-person learning. Half-days are also not helpful to parents that work full-time and have to physically be at work the eight hours. I just hope that there is reconsideration to either come up with a better system of having at least two full days of school, or returning full-time for the fourth quarter, or our children are going to pay for it in the long run. Thanks for your attention on this matter." Next is from Michelle Colby. Please read over this link. Another district going back full-time. Please use good information given to you to help you figure out how to open our schools fully, safely, and successfully. I really have nothing else to say to this board, because you continue to make decisions for yourself, not for the community or for the children. You continue to fail our children every day, and she provided a link to a story. From, next is from Samaya Richardson. With surrounding districts returning five days a week, and some even going all day with lunch being served, when will enough be enough? When will our children stop being used as bargaining chips? How far behind do our children have to get before someone in administration will take a stand for them? How far will parents be pushed until they are mentally, physically, and financially exhausted? With 75% of staff being vaccinated and the subpool being sufficient, when will our children be allowed to catch up? With being one of the largest school districts, we should have been leading from the front instead of coming up with mediocre excuses. It disgusts me knowing that my children's education is being held hostage for people's political agenda. We used to be a school district that parents were proud of and people rushed to live in. Now we will be one that is buried in more debt that looks for funding to academically catch up. These are all things that administration had control of, an administration that looks for excuses to let teacher and children stay home. If the intention was to stay remote, why did we only allow the children to go a half a day? Why wasn't there a better plan? You've had one year to come up with something, anything. Instead, we just get the runaround. We know it is all new, but that is not an excuse to do nothing. Instead, we have an administration that barely has children in the district playing games with our children's education. We already know we are capable of returning, so now it's time to roll up your sleeves and get to work. No more excuses. Listen to the science that you preached about. That is telling you it's okay to return. Now is the time to implement your rules and guidelines. I know a survey went out, but I don't understand why administration would purposely place the option in different orders to manipulate the system to their advantage. Stop playing games. Also, why is the lunch staff being used as daycare for teachers to return to work, but we are only letting our children go back two days a week? How is it safe for that, but nothing else? It's funny how the district can come up with solutions for its staff, but not for the children, and that's two minutes on that one. Next is from Lori Baerbauer. First, thank you for getting District 202 kids back inside the school building for their education. We have not had any issues to report. Second, since our COVID-19 numbers in Will County are at historic lows since July, and teachers are actively getting their vaccines, and the CDC recommends that schools return to in-person learning, we need leadership in Plainfield that can think outside the box to get our kids back in school every day of this week. This two days a week for four hours is absolutely no longer appropriate nor acceptable, and shouldn't be tolerated by our district any longer. There are hundreds of schools across the nation that have been in-person since August and have played sports and activities cautiously. It's time for 202 to return to in-person learning five days a week. By the time fourth quarter gets here, teachers will be vaccinated and excuses are no longer valid. The low COVID numbers, pardon me, the low COVID numbers in Will County don't justify keeping kids out of the school building any longer. It's time for our school board, teachers, and district leadership to step to the plate and take action and return our kids to the classroom to finish out their year in person. Next is from Debbie Rasmussen. Once again, I am asking that the kids go back to school, all kids, including high school, not just for four hours, two times a week. My student went to school and was only one of two or three kids in the class, and my student is pretty much on his or her laptop the whole time anyway. Parents don't want to bother sending their kids if that's the case. We are already looking into moving from this district, because many school districts have gone back to school five days, and I know for a fact that I'm not the only one. We do not want to do this, because we have been in Plainfield for 16 years, and my student will be a senior next year, but if they do not go back full-time by the fall, we will be pulling both our kids and moving. My student is so excited on the days he or she goes into school and needs to be five days a week. Please, my heart hurts for these kids. Please do the right thing." Next is from Jen Allison. I'm writing to you today with several concerns. First, I'm simply so disappointed in the leadership of this district. I have no words to express how disappointed I am that the students are not back to full days of school, despite it being proven safe. The refusal from the administrative team, the BOE, the teachers' union, and the teaching assistance union to allow anything but a six-foot distance, knowing that it is one recommendation of many, is unacceptable. The recommendations are meant to be part of the entire mitigation strategy that can be strengthened and lessened as needed within buildings as cases rise and fall. In a webinar with the CDC, which is linked, and the U.S. Department of Ed, hosted by the AASA, they state that exact fact and stress that the mitigations as a whole are measures to keep people safe, but that it is up to the leadership to evaluate what is working and what needs to be tightened should case numbers climb. Many schools have used the three-to-six-feet distancing and have not had student-to-student transmission. The fact that this district is unable to attempt this is a disgrace to our students. As a society, people choose not to follow recommendations all the time. How many of you eat the recommended amount of fruits and vegetables each day? Do you all get 150 minutes of aerobic exercise and two days of muscle strengthening activities each week? Those are also recommendations by the CDC. How can you suddenly decide to hang your hat on this one mitigation? Second, the educational choice form that was sent out to parents does not provide us with adequate information to actually make a choice for our students. How can we be expected to choose what we want when the options are not clear? It would also seem that on your choice forum, you would prefer people choose the hybrid model, thus skewing your data. I would prefer that my child attend five days per week and will send my child to school if that is the case, yet I cannot choose that, because it could also mean that my child would remain in remote learning for the remainder of the school year. And that is two minutes on that one. Next is from Mike Manade. How can you base a return to full school days on a parent's survey? This is the most ludicrous thing I have ever heard of. A school district is basing returning their students to classrooms on the results they receive from a survey. How about you make a decision in the best interest of the students and stick with it? You want to base it off of how many students we can fit in a classroom while practicing social distancing? There is no social distancing in sports, but you're letting all the teams get back to it, right? You want to say you're following the CDC guidelines for social distancing? Well, follow the CDC guidelines that say schools are safe to return to full in-person days. Stop beating around the bush, putting the inevitable off. These students belong in classrooms. And the teachers have to be going nuts with all this nonsense you're putting in through. They have to teach in-person and teach remote at the same time. The majority of them that wanted vaccines got them. Now put them back in the schools and let them teach full-time, full classes. This district has done nothing but hurt our children and community. While you use your infamous line, "It's in the best interest of the community," ha! Laughable. You all are simply laughable. What's not laughable is the irreparable damage you have done to these poor students. It's more than obvious you have attempted to keep them remote and out of schools for as long as possible, more than likely to save a buck or two, because lord knows you all cannot manage tax dollars. Look at Lane's salary. And we wonder why we have to sell bonds to climb our way back to being in the green. And for your mismanagement of our students, of our funds, and of our schools, I wish you all well in the upcoming election. We need board members that will honor the oath they took and actually care for the mental, physical, and spiritual well-being of our student body." Next is from Kim Williams. I would like to thank the board and the administration for taking my student, for making my student feel like my student is just going to be stupid. Yes, that is what my student told me. How does it feel crushing children's self-confidence? You realize that these children are going to be the ones running things when you are old and in nursing homes, right? My students' I-RATI score in English went down from the fall, so did not even want to do the math portion, I'm sure, because my student did not want to know. My student feels like he or she failed if the score did not go up. Does anyone on the board even have kids in the district, or are they just lucky they can afford tutors? I hope the board gets a pension, and I hope everyone gets voted out come April, because you all suck and really do not give an expletive about the students." Next is from Trevor Moore, Trevor J. Moore. I submit this public comment in response to an email I wrote to the entire board and to Dr. Abril on Wednesday, February 24. This email asked for a response from anyone on the email, and to date, I have received no response. While it is certainly your prerogative not to respond to a legitimate parent concern, I find it in poor taste. My email was expressing concern that the fourth quarter return to school date on the education choice form sent to families on February 24 changed the date of moving from remote to in-person learning on April, to April 7, with no discussion at a public meeting or advance notice to families. We were asked to make an irrevocable decision for remote or in-person learning the first week of December, with the promise we could change our choice starting March 22, the start of the fourth quarter. This was listed on the third-quarter educational choice form and the district's FAQ document. The only discussion of this change appears to be an email from Dr. Abril to Mr. Kerberg on February 11. The only advance notice families would get of this change appears to be Mr. Kerberg's comments at the February 22 board meeting, less than 24 hours before the choice forms were distributed. There is a chance a date change was discussed in person or on the phone and would not be subject to FOIA records. It seems unlikely that Dr. Abril would have had these conversations with every board member individually. My concern is this. The administrative team led the community and Board of Education to believe remote students could return on March 22 for a time period between Thanksgiving and the evening of February 22, and that is two minutes on that one. Next is from Jen Datweiler. I'm not sure who to even address this email to, as I feel that not one of you cares or respects my opinion on what is best for my children. I have watched my two children over this last year grow more and more distant and lazy. You all claim to be so afraid of a virus that you have stopped looking at what this is doing to the kids. When is enough enough? States are lifting the mask mandate, and so many schools are opening back up and getting kids back in. Enough of your excuses. Open the schools back up. Over the next two weeks, all of your teachers will have the vaccine, so there's nothing holding this up any longer. Do not give me the excuse again about the six feet, as it is merely just a suggestion, not a law. You have to stop picking and choosing what you feel like following. This district does not have the children's best interests at heart, and I'm so embarrassed to be a part of it. I used to have a sense of pride when I said my kids were in District 202. I now hang my head in shame. This district is the laughing joke of so many others. All of you should be ashamed." Next is from Gina McLeod. Have you ever really loved a product or company, maybe a brand of cookies or a beloved restaurant? Maybe you buy it year after year, remaining faithful to it no matter what? If it is a business, maybe you frequent it often, feel like it is almost an extension of your family. Maybe the product or company brings you a little bit of satisfaction or comfort, and when presented with other options, you're still loyal to that one. That type of school satisfaction and loyalty would have described my family's relationship with 202 over the last eight years. My oldest child is blank. I also have another student. Up until March 2020, we were largely satisfied with the district. And then the pandemic occurred, and it peeled back the layers of dysfunction in this district in a way I couldn't have imagined. First, a ramshackle remote plan in the final quarter of last year. Then, a vote to be fully remote to start the school year with no hybrid option. Then, no available Chromebooks for K through third graders for the entire first quarter of this year, followed by an inability to even get the most needy children, our special ed population, into the buildings in a meaningful way until late January. And let's not forget a very thin remote learning schedule that barely meets the ISBE guidelines of two and a half hours of synchronous learning a day, and parents like me had to fight, organize, and write letters to even get that. The hits just keep coming. Teachers required to teach to live and remote audiences at the same time, an enormous and difficult undertaking. The Zoom bombing with live sex acts, which went unreported by the district to the police and which were minimized as an unfortunate aspect of remote learning by Tom Hernandez. The multiple board meetings when parents were silenced because the Board of Education failed to follow the Open Meetings Act and allow public comment. The multiple board meetings where not one elected board member asked a question or uttered a comment about the return to school plan. And that's two minutes on that one. Next is from Kelly Napchick. There has been significant confusion over the most recent survey in regards to it being different from elementary to middle to high school. Perhaps there's a better way to ask the choices slash information, such as, one, I will keep my child entirely remote until I feel it is safe to return; two, I would be comfortable with four to five half-days only; or three, I would like as many full days as possible. While the district is looking for information from one end, that is not necessarily giving an accurate picture of what the families are asking for. And while you will never make everyone happy, I don't believe you're getting a true picture of what families would like or why they would like it. This information could most certainly help create better remote learning experiences and greatly improve in-person learning opportunities. Also, I'm highly disappointed that the survey stated if you wanted full days, and that didn't happen, you're automatically remote. As a district, you have no idea what the parents' plans and needs are. Many parents want full-day education no matter what. Many parents would have been able to accommodate two to four full days in their schedule, but given the working population in this district, a half-day schedule is near impossible to accommodate. The beginning of the year, you gave little to no lead time for parents to prepare. Aren't the point of the surveys to gather information in a timely fashion and make a decision and put that plan in place? Why was five full days given as an option at all when you have no intention of doing so? How is it fair not to give these families a choice in saying, "While we can't do five full days, this is what we can do." Would you like your family to participate?" And that's two minutes for that one.
And that's 20 minutes, Tom, so we're...
Yes, sir.
Now, moving on in our agenda to item 6.01. We have two items on the consent agenda this evening. We'll take them both together. 6.01 is approval of the regular session minutes of February 22 of 2021, and 6.02 is approval of the certified and non-certified personnel agendas, both as presented. Can I get a motion? Dave's motion?
Second.
Heather's second. Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Both items pass. Thank you. And now, item seven is four actions, site and finance committee. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Kerberg. The site and finance committee met last Wednesday, March 17, 6:00 p.m. The committee is bringing 11 items up for the board approval tonight. One of the items is 7.05... One of the items is 7.05 regarding the downtown Plainfield Tiff. Jake Melrose, the Economic Development Manager from the village, will be available at that time to discuss any questions you might have. We also have a financial presentation by Mr. Argas. So as we always do, we will start with the pressures report. We had a beginning cash and investment balance of 148 million, $26,065.88. We had revenues of 10 million, 338,572.19 with expenses of 24 million, 103,945.31 for ending cash and investment balance of 134 million, 256,67.99. On to 7.02, approval of the acceptance of the pressures report. That is my motion.
Day's motion?
Second.
Rod's second, Charlie?
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Robby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, item passes.
7.03, approval of payment of bills in the amount of 6,706,693.61. That is my motion.
Day's motion?
Second.
Rod's second, Charlie?
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Robby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, item passes.
7.04, approval of resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed 10 million dollars general obligation limited tax school bonds, Series 2021, for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay for principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. That is my motion.
Day's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Any questions or comments for the administration before we move forward with the vote on this? All right, Charlie?
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Robby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, item passes.
Now, 7.05 is the, for the approval and extension of the downtown Plainfield Tiff with intergovernmental agreement as submitted. So right now, I believe, Mr. Melrose, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Can you hear us? Yes.
Yes.
Is there any questions from the board regarding this?
Yeah, Mr. Melrose, can you tell us what the differences are from, in this extension of the Tiff, please?
Sure, well, it's a, so it's an addition, it's, the extension is an additional 12 years to the life of the Tiff. Otherwise, there really is no difference as far as the, the layout or the mapping. Everything stays the same, the redevelopment study stays the same, the district will stay the same. Base values stay the same. The only difference moving forward will be, is this intergovernmental, sorry, intergovernmental agreement. Easier to say IGA. The IGA will now split the increment moving forward 50%. So the village would receive 50% of the Tiff increment. And then the other 50% will be allocated in accordance with the, the tax rates for each district. So each district will receive their base value of what they've already been receiving for the last 23 years in addition to the 50, 50%.
And Jake, when you say district, you're referring to the taxing bodies such as
Yes.
Fire Protection District, the Library District, the School District.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Is there any other questions from the board?
So, so I, I was of the opinion that the original Tiff was for the purpose of like refacing the facades of the downtown buildings and doing a lot of the infrastructure that was needed to improve the downtown. And most of that is done. So now it seems as though this one is more for just regular maintenance other than the expanding of the public parking, but everything else seems to be just regular maintenance, which I'm not really sure falls under a Tiff.
So yes, it is, it, it's very, it's a variation of it. Yes, general maintenance of the, of the infrastructure is, is part of the Tiff's ability to utilize Tiff allocation. And so, yeah, one of the other functions is, is to again, continue our infrastructure improvements throughout the time. There's still more infrastructure that's still necessary as we move forward. Parking is just one of them. We, we have a grant program with the Fire, Fire District that we would like to still continue where we both split payments to provide for sprinkler systems in, in the downtown area and within the, I'm sorry, Tiff District. So that's another allocation that we utilize for the Tiff districts as well. And then also the general maintenance sidewalks and cleaning and snow removal and the like and landscaping. Those are somewhat general maintenance. However, a lot of downtowns actually have special service areas, especially ones with elaborate infrastructure such as ours. They have special service areas or business improvement districts, and what those do is essentially create or set up a, what would be sort of a tax line item of sorts on the properties. And whereby the, that would then help cover the cost of the, what would be the common area maintenance. And oftentimes, those fees are often passed down to the businesses that lease within that downtown area. So that is one of the reasons why we, we even, you know, and this is before, you know, even the pandemic came about, we, we wanted to see if we could move this forward because we didn't feel it was the right time, the ability for, we, we feel that we had garnered good momentum in downtown. I think everybody agrees that our restaurant scene has, has really come along. However, we, we didn't start, you know, that growth of our value in our downtown area, it really didn't start again until about 2016. It had, it has been stagnant for, I was, I think it was actually 2009 or 2008. And that's right when the infrastructure was put in, we saw a jump in our equalized assessed value in the downtown, and it went completely stagnant for eight to nine years from that point on, leaving not a whole lot of growth in terms of our, our value in the downtown area. So we just started seeing that climb again, slowly getting out of there. But I think, you know, we can all remember like 2016, 2017, the fire station was still vacant, the tri-labarn was still vacant. We started to see that growth and that momentum. Unfortunately, things happen now. We, we slowed down, but I think, I think we're starting to get there, where we've been seeing the retail starting to grow. However, we still feel it's necessary to, to not put any sort of, any more burden on any, any businesses that are coming in town. We, we have a, we have, it's, it's a small business oriented downtown and, you know, we're, that's our recruitment. You know, we, while we would love to see a national chain, that, that's, you know, it's not out of, out of, you know, out of the woods there. But we, we, we know that that's, that's our bread and butter, is our small businesses that, that want to, want to come to our downtown. And by keeping that burden off of it, it does help with our ability to recruit and, and to make things more accessible to, to people to come in to our downtown area.
To that same point, Jake, it's, the Tiff is not simply to allow for additional maintenance. It's to continue to encourage more businesses to come to downtown. Is that correct?
It, it does, yeah. And it will certainly does help. It gives us the ability to, you know, you know, there are some, you know, part, partial development opportunities that could allow us that ability to encourage new development. And, and by having that mechanism, it certainly does help.
Is there any other questions for the board?
Did I answer your question, Heather? Charlie, and there's maybe more of a question for you, Tony. Do you know how much this, what, what our revenue would be for this, if, the, the difference between if there was, if the Tiff was not in existence? Off the current numbers?
Yes, we, we are just under $500,000 in value on the Tiff. And, and we see the Tiff continue to grow on, you know, budgeting forward. We're anticipating, you know, one and a half to 2% growth is what we're budgeting. So if we look at the Tiff too from, obviously, there's a lot of strong community value here. There's also the investment value of the Tiff. At this current point is growing faster than, than a lot of other investment vehicles that we have available to us.
So Tony, do you recommend the Tiff?
I, I am comfortable with it. I, I hate to use the term recommend because it ultimately not my job to, to really steer the board. But I am very comfortable with what, what the village is asking of us. I think, you know, as we've talked about too, is we've seen property values in our town continue to, to grow. You know, downtown's kind of the heart of Plainfield. So, you know, continuing to invest in our community and in the partnership is, is something that I wouldn't discourage by any means. But ultimately, that's a decision for, for the board.
Okay.
And Jake, how much of this? There's an old saying out there that 50% of a parcel of land is better than 100% of no development on that parcel of land. And again, as, as Tony said, you know, it's not necessarily the district's role to recommend to the board on this. But I believe there's a lot of truth in that philosophy, those sayings.
One thing I can mention to the, to the board on this is, in order for the Tiff extension to take place, all of the different taxing districts within the Tiff have to vote and approve it. And it is being taken to the various boards of these districts. So it's something that seems to have pretty widespread support.
Thanks, Tony.
Okay, then. Mr. Melrose, thank you for joining us tonight. The board, we will go ahead and move forward. Five is for the approval of the extension of the downtown Plainfield Tiff with intergovernmental agreement as submitted. That is my motion.
Motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Further discussion from the board regarding this before we vote? All right, go ahead, Charlie.
Mr. Robby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
With hesitation, yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, item passes.
Next, Mr. Argas will give us a financial efficiency update. Tony? Tony, we can't hear you. Tony, we can't hear you.
It says the host has muted me.
We can hear you now.
Good now.
Okay, just one second. Sorry, I'm getting to my PowerPoint here.
That's fine.
Can you all see the PowerPoint?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Let me put it in presentation mode and I will kick us off. Should be pretty quick here. But just wanted to look at where our dollars are at and the efficiency that we're using them here. Just a couple of quick facts on District 202. We were affirmed for the latest bond offering of an AA2 rating from Moody's. That is the third highest possible rating that Moody's gives. The affirmation was nice to receive the confirmation that we're saying it AA2. But Moody's has recently changed the way that they rate school districts. And there's been numerous school districts that have seen a downgrade this year just because of those rating changes. So our finances carried us through and we did not get downgraded, which was great. The Illinois State Board of Education assesses each district with a financial profile score each year. Recognition would be the highest score possible. It looks at the fund balances, daily expenses, revenue, cash on hand, and then the short and long-term debt of the district. And we continue to receive that highest score possible. Our property tax value base, so the value of the property here has grown every year since 2013. And over that period of time, it's been a 29.7, 29.17% increase. While tax rates themselves for, for our town has fallen. In 2013, it was a tax rate of 6.23. 2019's tax rate was 4.64, which would be a 25.52% decrease. So then we've received numerous questions too on why can a town like Naperville 203 offer a tax refund, but why wouldn't it be prudent or practical for District 202? And really, it's just we're two very different districts. We have a smaller commercial property base than Naperville 203. We have a lower reliance on our local property taxes than they do, but a greater reliance on state funding. So we're more impacted when the state holds dollars flat or withholds dollars. We've got a higher enrollment in Plainfield 202. And then we've got a commitment to operational efficiency. And what that means is we run very leanly. And as we'll talk about in a couple of slides forward here, we don't have a lot of extra expenditures. We have a good, solid operating expense per student that we offer at the district. And then just as a reminder, well, we showed a, a large deficit this year. Most of that was just due to the decrease in state funding and the construction of Wall &amp; Oaks. We received the revenue for Wall &amp; Oaks last year, so we showed a, a larger surplus last year. And then we're expending those dollars this year, which, so we're just using kind of the balance, the fund balance there to pay for that building. When we look at our tax base compared to Naperville 203, you can see that they have their value of their tax base or their EAB, their equalized assessed value is 1.1 billion dollars more than what we offer. And a large portion, portion of that would be, they're about 800 million higher in terms of value of residential property. And then when you look at the industrial and commercial combined, they're 300, over 300 million higher than we are there. So it, you can see that we're not, we don't take in as much property tax initially. So it gets harder to refund it at that point. And then when you look at the number of students we have, you can see that Naperville 203 in 2019 was receiving over $300,000 of tax dollars per pupil. And when they look at the value of their EAB, we were at 136,000. So we're pulling in less tax dollars from the get-go for each of our student. And that's because they rely 89% on those tax dollars to fund their district. Our local revenue is 62%, and we have a much greater reliance on the state. We've talked a little bit this year about the flat funding of EBF, the educational-based funding, and how the state withholds our tier dollars. And just as a quick overview, the tier dollars are the extra money that the state gives to school districts that have a, a lower local ability to pay for the entire cost of the district. So this year, we will not be receiving 4.2 million dollars from the state. And in the governor's first budget address for next year, he had mentioned holding this revenue flat again, which would be an additional 4.2 million that we would not receive. But what makes that tough is those dollars are actually intended to grow. So the truer loss is probably a little bit more over 9 million than the eight and a half that we won't receive in the next couple of years. But despite all that, just wanted to show what I mean when I talk about operational efficiency. And I look at this kind of as a return on investment to our community. So what you see in this, this kind of plot here is going from left to right, these are a look at the park assessment data for ELA scores across unit districts in Cook, Kendall, Kane, DuPage and Will County. And you can see, we score well above average when compared to the whole. And then if you start at the top and work your way to the bottom, that is the operating expenses per pupil. So those are the total expenses of the district divided by each student that we offer. And we have the lowest operated, operating expenditures per pupil of all of these districts. So despite having less dollars to work with on a student-by-student basis, we're outperforming well above the average district, the unit districts here that are listed above. And really, you know, when we talk about efficiency, you think about it as doing the most with the least amount of dollars. And I think this is just a great representation that as a district, we continue to do that. And I will go ahead and stop sharing my screen here. Thank you.
Is there any questions from the board for Tony on anything we've seen?
Questions or comments?
Well, it's just that, you know, we don't pull in, as Tony explained, we don't pull in the commercial revenues that Naperville does. And, but we continue to try to work with the different municipalities that make up 202 to bring in more commercial development. And hopefully, when the numbers continue to go down, more companies will come into Plainfield and invest so we can have more business opportunities and more revenue and lesser burden on our taxpayers. So thank you, Tony.
Any other questions, comments? Anyone else?
And you know, one other comment that I just found interesting as I was putting this together, was just playing with some of the numbers on that last graph in terms of what it would cost us as a district in expenses to spend like those districts at the top, the ones that have the highest operating expenditures per pupil. And with the number of students we have, we'd have to add over $100 million in expenses in our operating accounts to equal those dollars. And it just simply dollars we don't, we don't have. So again, just find it very impressive, the, the work we do as a district for the resources that we have available.
Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Tony. I would just make a couple of comments. One, just to draw out from Tony's slide four again. First of all, I'd just like to applaud you, Tony, and the team for, you know, putting this together, you know, and really providing the board and the community with, you know, this level of granular detail. Because again, I think everybody just thinks that every district in Illinois is created equal from a funding standpoint. And clearly, we can see from this that is far from the case. That is obviously what the state legislature was trying, is trying to get to. Unfortunately, the governor is not funding that at the level that was agreed upon. So therefore, we're at a disadvantage. But I think, you know, that slide four where you see the valuation of our community compared to the valuation of Naperville is $1.1 billion less. That is huge from a revenue standpoint for school districts. And yet you can see from slide eight what we do with the dollars that we have. So again, I guess just to in some ways underscore and address some of the comments and concerns that seem to exist with some in the community that the district and the Board of Ed has not been well utilizing the funds that we have available. I would hope that people would take some time to look at this presentation and understand that, you know, I think it's, it's far from the case and, you know, it's really just the opposite. So again, kudos to the Board's Site and Finance Committee, the Board of Education, the administration for the work that has been done in putting all of this together and keeping us at the level that we are going forward. And again, hopefully, we will get the additional funding, you know, at the state level that we have been promised and that we expect when we build our budgets on an annual basis. And go forward from there.
Thank you, Dan Tony, all right, Mr. Kerber. Moving on to 7.07. Approval of purchase of the founding resources through curriculum and instruction for the 2020, 21 through 2022 school year for a total cost of $140,186.43, consisting of trades math for $10,829, forensic science for a total of $36,047.50, AP statistics, $61,825.43, and AP environmental sciences for $31,484.50. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes, item passes.
7.08. Approval of the proposal for an audit services from Watermark and Amen LLC as submitted. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Kerber?
Yes, item passes.
7.09. Approval for the proposal guaranteed energy savings contract from Performance Services Incorporated as submitted. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes, item passes.
7.10. Approval of the 10-year safety survey reports with corrections to be made for $154,260 at Temple Ridge, Heritage Grove, Lakewood Falls, Riverview, and Wesmir. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes, item passes.
7.11. Approval of the installations as submitted. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes, item passes.
7.12. Approval of the acceptance of donations as submitted. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes, item passes.
7.13. Approval of the tenant zone recommendations for the 2021, 2022 school year. That is my motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. And Dr. Abrel?
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. We would like to present some information here regarding the attendance zones for the upcoming school year, which would be the 2021, 2022 school year. Also, on the call tonight is Mrs. Bressers from our Transportation Department. And certainly, I will allow her to add anything that she feels prudent as we proceed through our presentation here. Dr. Wood will be running it for me. And you can see our first slide, and a question might be from, from folks is why do our attendance zones for the 19, I'm sorry, the 2021 and 22 school year need to be revised? Well, it's really because of a new elementary building that we're opening. We have not opened a new school since 2008 with Plainfield East. We're opening a new elementary building because that will allow us to provide, for the first time ever in this district, all-day kindergarten to all eligible students in their neighborhood schools. To do that, we do need to adjust some of the attendance zones. The information that you're going to hear or see here with additional information was presented at our Site and Finance Committee on March 17th last week. We have a larger number of students impacted this year on our attendance zone adjustments. Every year, we make adjustments to our attendance zones. Sometimes it might be 10 to 20 students. Other times, it might be 135 or more students if it's a subdivision or a larger subdivision. But almost every year, we make adjustments to attendance zones. Again, this year, it is a larger amount of students because of the opening of the new elementary building. The, Dr. Wood, next slide, please. The elementary school is being built or is in the process of being built. Coming out of the strategic plan, it was a recommendation to provide full-day kindergarten for all eligible students. We will still offer a half-day program to parents who request that. But by and large, it will be an all-day kindergarten program. And a byproduct of the new elementary building is it's also going to give stability to our specialized special ed programs. Currently, every couple of years, maybe three years, we have to move those programs to buildings within the district where there's room. And having the additional space created by having the 18th elementary building will allow for the, the special ed programs. Some examples are our Basis Program, our Star Plus, our FBI, and some of our preschool programs to have a more permanent location and anchor that those students won't have to move or we won't have to just be looking for a space to house those programs or in a different school. Dr. Wood, next program or next slide, please. Guiding principles that were, were taken into account on this decision. We really did want to and try to and believe satisfied disrupt as few students as possible. Again, someone has to move in this situation. If students did need to move, we would keep them in their same feeder house. As many of you know, we have a house system, the red house, blue house, greenhouse, orange house. And out of the large amount of students that do have to move, or I'm sorry, the, the total number of students, 997 at elementary, 226 at middle, and 108 out of elementary. By and large, they stay within their same house or they matriculate to the same high school. It maximizes efficiency of transportation. It does not add significant travel times or distances. And there may be a little bit of an increase from one elementary to the new one where students are moving. But by and large, they make that time back up when they attend the middle school in that house. It does adjust for some outlier attendance areas. And it also allows for some residential and possible enrollment growth. We are seeing an increase in impact and site fees from housing starts within our district and specifically the Village of Plainfield. But we are seeing an uptick in comparison, the first three months. We are far ahead of the first three months of last calendar year and the year before that. Dr. Wood, the next slide illustrates or shows the number of students moving. It's a little bit over 1,300 there, less than 1% at the middle and high school are impacted, but about 4% at the elementary schools. I am not going to read subdivision by subdivision those who are affected. The information from this presentation and additional information, interactive map that we already currently have will be updated and available on the website. Mr. Hernandez and Community Relations will be presenting or posting all of this information on our website. Buildings are aware of it or will become further aware of it and the other details so they can update families themselves. Parents impacted, as I said, will receive notification from the district or from the specific school. Parents who do have concerns can address those concerns either to the building administration or to our elementary, middle, or high school level directors and the administration and personnel departments. Requests for accommodations will be handled and evaluated as they are now on a case-by-case basis. So with that being said, that is a brief presentation upon the attendance zone recommendations for next school year. Again, I anticipate after this school year, we'll be back to very minor changes in subsequent years. We continue to evaluate the usefulness of our buildings as they continue to age. We do have a couple of buildings out in, in the district that are getting older and we need to always evaluate their usefulness as traditional schools. So with that being said, Mrs. Bressers, do you have anything to add? Or would like to add?
Nope, Dr. Abrel, as usual, you did a wonderful job presenting everything that we worked on when we came up with these numbers, all the criteria that we used in order to determine low impact on the changes, so.
I understand there, there will be some angst and trepidation. I can only tell you, having been here in the heyday, when we were opening one school, sometimes two and even one year, at least three, I believe, we opened. Maybe it was just one year, maybe it was even two. But multiple schools and students changing schools and attendance zones. You know, students really are pretty resilient and they make friends wherever they go. And it's not a building that makes the students experience a positive one. It's the people within that building. And as this elementary building opens, we're going to look first to fill it with teachers' internal transfers or change of assignment. And there certainly will be teachers who will be moving to this building. It might be a teacher that's at the school currently now where some of the students attend who's going to go there. We have many, many caring and competent, excellent teachers throughout the district. Same thing with administration. We don't hoard them at one school building to make it a positive experience or to make that one certain school building positive with the culture and climate. The, the Wall and Oaks Elementary School and the providing of all-day kindergarten along with stabilization of special education programs is going to be great for our students. It's going to be great for our parents. It's going to be great for our staff and for our entire community. I'll open it up to any questions from the board at this time.
I have a question. Sorry, I just thought about it when looking at the map again. From the last time we did that, you know that one little red square that's between the orange house and the greenhouse that goes to north? Why can't we move them to either the greenhouse or the orange house? It just seems way on the other side of the district.
Mrs. Bressers, can you answer that now?
Well, not knowing exactly what little square, I can tell you that the direction of the executive cabinet and myself was to take a look at all of the little areas that are kind of protruding that really shouldn't be there and readjusting them and getting those closer to a school. Dr. Abrel pretty much said, I don't want a bus going by a school to get to another school with kids. However, saying that, numbers played the game here. So depending on how many students might be in that subdivision, it may be difficult to move them into another school that would overload that school. So I can get you information on, I'm going to assume this little red square right by the end of Academy?
Yes.
Yeah. I can get you more information on where that one ended up?
I just know we talked about it last time and we couldn't make it happen. And I don't remember the reasons. I know it had something to do with numbers. But to me, it just has never made sense. Because, you know, I know some of those kids and I know my friend, my children have been friends with some of those kids and they're way over on the other side of the difference. It's just, or district, it's just really never made sense to me. I know there was originally, but perhaps that's something we can keep looking at.
I think they're over there. And they go to Central Elementary. And I think they, if I recall correctly, have a lot of students in that subdivision.
Okay.
And Sandy is correct. Sometimes it is driven by numbers and then you get out of whack a little bit on enrollments of certain schools, especially elementary schools compared one to another. You know, we also looked at geography and all of this, you know, certain parts of the district. It's easier, it, it takes less time to get to elementary school A, which might be just a shade farther than elementary school B. But because of things like the Weber Road construction or the frontage roads, which really there's not a great pathway north from, from Renwick Road. If you're headed, you know, east of Route 59, sometimes that plays a part in it also that when you look at it on paper or geographically, boy, that just doesn't make any sense. But it really does when you look at the time or when you look at the numbers of students that are going to go from one area to another. There's, there's just a lot of moving parts to it. And the, the visual doesn't always paint a logical picture. One would think it would. And if we were perfectly square and if enrollment increases or decreases occurred at the same rate in all areas of the district, and if we didn't have, you know, let's say like Crystal Lawn's Elementary School, which really the maximum is around 300 students as compared with some of our, or Wall and Oaks, the new elementary school, which could be a capacity of about 900 students, you know, all those things. If they were all even and equal, then it would make some more logical sense on the visuals. But sometimes that just isn't how it plays out.
I know there was a reason last time, but just always thought there would be a way for us to eventually change that, hopefully. And then, one request and a reminder to the public, the request first amid last time, if I know the majority did not agree with, that we consider some kind of grandfathering for people, kids who maybe have been in a school for five years and are now going to be moving to a new school. I would hope there's some consideration given to perhaps allowing them to stay one more year, just so they can finish there, and then going along with that, because I know this was a big issue last time when we made some moves, whenever it was, a couple of years ago, remind parents, which, Dr. Abel, you did already, but I want to reemphasize this, that if they have any kind of concerns, individual reasons, specific challenges for their child, special needs for their child, please contact the administration, we are not uncaring, people want to hear it, and for the right reason, exceptions can be made, so please contact them, don't just get angry.
We currently, and that was the last slide, if I didn't explain it well enough, I apologize, there is currently an attendance zone appeal process, and that's handled through the director in administration and personnel for either elementary, middle, or high school, depending on what what grade level the student is impacted. It will be given consideration, they are granted, I would not say that every request is granted, there is some criteria that needs to be met, and that can be explained further, and it is talked about or or explained on the form. Again, it would be the Dr. Fink at the elementary level, Mrs. Miller at the middle school level, and Dr. Brown at the high school level, those are the three directors in our administration and personnel department. Consideration will be given to those requests, I promise everyone will receive a response, I can't promise that everyone will receive a response they like or agree with, but we will listen. Sometimes people, unfortunately, confuse listening with agreement, but we certainly will listen and take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Abel. Is there any other questions from the board? Okay. We're at seven point one-three, approval of attendance zone recommendations for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
All right, Charlie? Yeah, we already got them, yeah, we got the motion in the second.
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Kerber?
Yes. Item passes?
That is in from sign finance.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right, moving on down to item eight for Action Curriculum and Technology Committee. Mr. Roby?
Yes, last Wednesday, our chair, Board Member Smith, was unable to attend, so I'm filling in for him. First, we welcomed our newest board member, Teresa Howard Collins, into what was one of our shortest meetings for a very long time. There were four informational items and two items for approval. We also discussed resource purchases to be approved by the Finance Committee, which we've already voted on, so I'll skip that. And then up for approval, we had eight point zero-two of, and to replace the display for thirty days, public for any comments and feedback, the Zainer Blazer Handwriting Kindergarten curriculum, resource for twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents, and the Go Formative software, twenty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and twenty cents. That is my motion.
Mike's motion?
Second.
Heather's second. Charlie?
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins? Yes. Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes.
And then just two other items that were informational that I would like to bring up. First, we had one of our student ambassadors, Sammy, a senior at East, present to discuss her thoughts about the school year now and moving forward. A very impressive, well-spoken and thoughtful young lady. Among her many thoughts were that, from her perspective, remote learning is going well. She had originally signed up to attend in person, but then saw the number of students at her school and her friends that were going to be remote, so she chose that option instead. Seems like the students who are doing well are also having less of a struggle with remote, an opinion that was shared by our principals later in their discussion. Office hours, in her opinion, have been a huge help. As a student, she said that you really need to plan in advance what you need help with, the questions you have, and then office hours are very effective. So her advice to other students is to go in with a plan. There were some concerns, especially at the high school level, about the number of students that may potentially be returning, how they would safely keep distance from each other. She'd also like to see opportunities to get together and see some of her other classmates socially. She knows that there are some groups planning, find ways outside events like prom, but Sammy stressed to us that the real key is just getting to see and be with your friends, and it's not necessarily the event. It is being with others that's important, and that we thought was great advice for us all. She mentioned that she would like to see some kind of an opportunity for graduation celebration outside of the drive-through option of last year, and knows that we are having discussions about that, and whatever we would do would have to be done safely. Then we had three principals join us, A.J. Hondo from JFK, Michelle Imbordino from Liberty ville, Liberty, Liberty Vet, I can't say it, Liberty, Trevor Harris from Eichelberger, so we want to thank them first for attending, and I'm just going to point out a few of the items that we discussed. They did stress how much that teachers are putting into this year, and not to underestimate the enormous effort it was to move quickly into remote and the challenges of supporting both in-person learning and remote learning simultaneously. There was some discussion about the supports that are being provided to families, students, and staff. They are still concerned about students who are struggling and noted that they seem to be the same students who have always struggled. The largest challenge is getting them to engage, particularly for those who are remote. They are hoping to return all soon and continue addressing their needs the best they can. They really stress that they need to get their kids with them to allow staff to focus on their needs. And then there was more discussion on what those supports might look like. They emphasized that the technology supports, the equity work, and thank the board and the community, and feel that from an overall perspective, they are receiving the help and support that they need. I'm sure I missed a few things, but Dr. Wood or Teresa, is there anything else that you would like to add?
No, the principals really appreciated all the effort that the teachers have put in to make remote learning as successful as it possibly could be.
Nope, you cast it, Dr. Roby.
Okay, that was it from Curriculum and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. Roby, appreciate that. All right, so jumping on down to item eleven, and just prior to that, let me just touch on something that I should have mentioned after we approved the consent agenda and the personnel reports, would like to officially welcome Jennifer Lewis as the first Assistant Principal of our eighteenth elementary school, Wallen Oaks. Jennifer has taught fourth grade at Ridge Elementary since two thousand and six. She also serves as Ridge Elementary's Title One After-School Program Lead Administrator in both two thousand twelve and two thousand fourteen. So congratulations, Jennifer, and welcome to the administrative team at Wallen Oaks. Look forward to having you there, leading that building going forward into next year. So, thank you for indulging me on that. Second thing, we will need to, I will need to get a motion to amend the agenda. We actually have an item on here, in essence, twice, which we do not need on here twice. So we, I need a motion to amend the agenda to remove item eleven point zero-four as a duplicate. So if I can get a motion?
My motion.
Dave's motion?
Second.
Heather's second. Charlie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes, so item eleven point zero-four is removed from the agenda. So now, in section eleven for Action Other, we have three items for this evening, we will take them all separately. So item eleven zero-one is approval of the resolution authorizing the dismissal of teachers effective at the end of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Heather's motion?
Second.
Teresa's second. Charlie?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes, item passes. Eleven point zero-two, approval of the updated Board of Education policy five colon twenty-E two, resolution to prohibit sexual harassment. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Heather's motion?
Second.
Rod's second. Charlie?
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes, item passes. And eleven point zero-three, approval of the resolution authorizing March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, performance-based associate superintendent slash superintendents contract between the Board of Education, a Plainfield Community Consolidated School District two oh-two, and Glenn Wood. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Heather's motion?
Second.
Dave's second. Is there any comments or discussion from the board before we vote?
Yes, I have a comment. I need to explain my upcoming vote because I don't want the public, nor Dr. Wood, whom I have already discussed this with, to think that my comments are a, or my vote is a reflection upon him, but rather my comments are about the timing and the question of who should be making this decision. Dr. Wood is a good and honest man, a capable leader, and I have really enjoyed working with him over the past four years. He will be a fine superintendent, but as a board member who will no longer be here in thirty days, I do not believe that I should be making the decision on who will be taking over leadership on July first of twenty-twenty-two and binding the district into a contractual relationship through June of twenty-twenty-five, when it is possible that all seven people sitting in these chairs could be different. We already know that at least two, perhaps four, will change next month. This is a decision that the next board should be making, and it gives the appearance to the public of a current board that is rushing to make a decision out of fear of what the next duly-elected board may think. I have every confidence that Dr. Wood could apply to be the next superintendent and would so be appointed appropriately by the school board to whom he will be answering. This is the wrong group of people making the decision at the wrong time. The board to whom Dr. Wood will be accountable to should be making the hire. This is their call and not ours.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments before we vote?
Yes, I respectfully disagree with Mike in that a year ago, or even a little over a year ago, we placed Glenn into a new role as associate superintendent for the purposes of developing skills and learning more about what it would be to become the superintendent with the full intention of this board, that he would most likely become the next superintendent unless he proved that he was not capable of that position. So I do disagree with Mike in that this decision has been made by this board, and therefore I fully support proceeding with putting Glenn Wood in the position of superintendent or associate superintendent for a year and then superintendent, as we had discussed over a year ago.
Thank you, Heather. Other comments before we vote? Everyone else good? All right, Charlie, call the roll.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
I can't understand.
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes. Item passes. And with that, I would like to take a moment to officially welcome Associate Superintendent Dr. Glenn Wood as our next Superintendent of Schools starting in July of twenty-twenty-two. And just to reiterate what Heather had shared as well, this has been a process and a plan by this Board of Education that dates back more than eighteen months. We began having these discussions and reviews. We actually even met with and interviewed Dr. Wood in closed session, of course, as it was a personnel matter, last spring, prior to naming him Associate Superintendent. We named him Associate Superintendent last spring, then upon what we as a Board of Education deemed successful interview process, and again, with the plan that he would ultimately move into the role of Superintendent of Schools going forward. So again, Dr. Wood will take over superintendency when Dr. Abel retires in June of twenty-twenty-two. In the meantime, and and one of the real purposes for creating this transition, this timing, was to allow them to create a transition plan in partnership with the Board of Education, where Dr. Wood will continue, as we have done for the past school year, to expand his roles and responsibilities within the district, to also shadow Dr. Abel over the course of the next year. This is also, I might point out, a very similar process to what we did with the Board of Education at the time did when Dr. Abel was hired as Associate Superintendent for a year and then transitioned to Superintendent upon the retirement of Dr. John Harper. Just a little bit background on Dr. Wood and why we feel like he is the very qualified future leader of this district, he is a twenty-nine-year education veteran. He came to District two oh-two in two thousand and nine as a Director of High School Curriculum and Instruction. He then moved on to the position of Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, and then, again, most recently last spring, was tabbed to be the Associate Superintendent for the district. He has also served as a principal of Victor Andrew High School in Tenley Park for three years. He started his education career in nineteen ninety-two as a math teacher at Amos Alonso Stagg High School in Palos Heights. At District two oh-two, Dr. Wood, again, as I said, has served in a variety of capacities, including at the administrative level upward mobility during his time here. And again, we look forward to, as a Board of Education, working with both he and Dr. Abel going forward for the next year plus in creating a very smooth transition. It's one of our goals as a Board of Education, and one of the things that we deem most critically important to our work as a board is continuity of leadership. The Board of Education really only has one, one employee, and that is the superintendent. So therefore, it is the one hire that this Board of Education needs to take as its primary responsibility, and that is what we have done, again, with a plan dating back over eighteen months, leading to this point in time, and what we will continue to work toward over the course of the next fifteen months or so, to provide, again, good leadership, continuity of leadership, and put this district in great position going forward into the the future as well. So with that, again, welcome Glenn to the future opportunity that you will have in this district. Did you want to say anything, Dr. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Kerber, absolutely. I'm honored and humbled, really, to continue to serve Plainfield two oh-two community and build upon the many great things that we've done and accomplished throughout the years. My main goal is to help children create better opportunities for themselves, they can create a better future, and we really do that by focusing on serving our students, supporting our staff, and connecting with the community. So I'm grateful for the support and trust of the school board and Dr. Abel, thank you.
All right, so we are moving on down, and item twelve, twelve point zero-two, I know Mr. Westphal does have a Wellco report, he unfortunately just had to step out of the room for a moment, I believe for a work He unfortunately just had to step out of the room for a moment, I believe, for a work call. So we will jump down first to 12.03, the Return 2021 update, and I will turn it over to you, Dr. April.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. Just a brief update on our return plan of 20 and 21 school year. As we had stated in our press release approximately two weeks ago issued by Mr. Hernandez and out of our Community Relations Department, that beginning on April 7th, we would be and will be returning to five-day-a-week in-person instruction. Note, will not be full days, it will be the same schedule as the mornings are now. We will be taking the groups of the A students or the A group, combining them with the B group for five-day-a-week instruction or attendance. The results of our educational choice form showed that approximately 74% of our parents of elementary students, 65% of middle school students, and 52% of high school students wished for a return to in-person instruction or learning. The possibility to be able to take A group or the A group of students in hybrid and the B group of students in hybrid and putting them together was due largely or really totally driven by the Illinois Department of Public Health and the State Board of Education modifying the six-foot social distancing guidance down to three feet. The CDC later, I believe it was last week, followed with that same guidance themselves. Lunches are still really a problem for us, trying to be able to attend a full day, back to the old type of schedule or traditional schedule. And the reason it's problematic is because of the social distancing guidance. ISBE, or State Board of Education, and IDPH, Department of Public Health, did not modify that from six feet down to three feet. In fact, the State Board of Education in their written communication sent out on March 11th was very clear stating that schools must ensure that all individuals maintain social distancing of at least six feet when masks are removed for eating. That's a direct quote. You know, I received feedback from folks and have tried to answer why it's problematic for us to go a full day and serve lunch, and some people tell me that all of our neighboring districts have figured it out, or many of our neighboring districts have figured it out, and that's simply just not true or not accurate. Oswego School District 308 will not be serving lunches. In fact, their schedule is four days, or four mornings, of in-person attendance close to home and just over in Crest Hill, Richland Elementary School District 88, and Chaney-Monji Elementary School District 88. I'm sorry, Richland is 88A, and Chaney-Monji is 88. They will not be serving lunches and will not be attending full day of in-person attendance. Now, there are some certainly school districts that have had or are having full-day in-person attendance with lunches. Oftentimes, those school districts have smaller class sizes to begin with than District 202. And, you know, one example might be Elwood Elementary School over near Joliet. Their elementary or their class sizes, and that's an elementary K-8 district, but their class sizes are 19 to begin with. Ours are running around 24, give or take. So when you remove two, three, four students who their parents do chose or decide, choose for them to stay home, then that makes their numbers smaller, and they may be able to pull it off with the space that they have. You know, another larger school district that is also a unit district is Elgin U46. They're able to attend for more time, and they're able to attend, as their superintendent told me, that they have approximately 47% of their students returning for in-person instruction. Ours, at the elementary level, are 74, middle school 65, and then up the food chain to high school is 52. So it becomes very problematic when it needs to be six feet or more when masks are removed for eating. We are planning for in-person promotion ceremonies at the 8th grade level and in-person high school graduation ceremonies. Information on those dates and the formats of those ceremonies will be distributed by the homeschools by the end of this week. Certainly by the time we get to those either promotion ceremonies or graduation ceremonies, things may have opened up even more, and we may be able to allow more folks for in-person attendance, even though they're in outdoor venues. Right now, there is a limit, it's not unlimited seating or attendance for those types of events, but certainly another two months or so from now, it could be. For the fall, we do continue to plan for a traditional schedule or returning to a traditional format of education that's based on several factors, one being the vaccine becoming more and more prevalent, or more people receiving the vaccinations. It's also predicted there will be an availability of an optional vaccine for those 16 and under. We have approximately four and a half to five more months of scientific breakthroughs and understanding about the novel virus. We do continue to work on alternative plans. However, if we had to go back to severe mitigations or if there was a different type of pandemic to come about, we are trying to make alternate plans for that. But again, we do plan, as many other districts are planning, for a return to a traditional format of education in the fall. So with that, if board members have any questions, I'll certainly entertain them, or I will answer, or any members of our district-level administrative team.
Yes, Lane, there are a couple questions that were asked. Can you please explain to the public, as you explained to us, what the Naperville schools truly are doing as far as lunch is concerned?
And I'll double-check and fact-check with my assistant suits on this. If I understood correctly, or talking to the administration in those districts, Naperville 203 would be serving in-person lunches. Correct me, Dr. Wood, if I'm inaccurate on this statement, in grades K through 8, but not at the high school level?
Correct.
And again, those are the latest plans with the information that we have. I would never say that they couldn't change their mind. Indian Prairie School District 204 was in-person lunches for elementary, but not middle and high school.
And then again, the reason we can't do lunches in study halls or classrooms is because our enrollment is of the size that we can space the kids three feet apart, but we are unable to space them six feet apart in those classrooms, correct?
At the numbers of students or parents wishing to send their students back, yes. It becomes very problematic to adhere to the six feet when a mask comes off to eat. It's near impossible. There might be maybe a few classrooms here and there that it could be done, but again, how do you do it for a few classrooms in elementary school A, B, C, but not for other districts? It just, it just becomes a logistical nightmare and impossible, really, to do. Certainly, Mrs. Griffith, if you'd like to add anything to that?
The only thing I would add is, I know we've gotten questions about plastic partitions and whether or not those could be used. Most recently, IDPH, the Illinois Department of Public Health, as well as CDC, they are not recommending use of plastic partitions during the time of lunch. So they are recommending the six feet apart, especially when students have their masks off. Plastic partitions can be used when students are in person with masks on, if you cannot be three feet apart, but it is not recommended for lunch at this time. That doesn't mean it can't change down the road, and it would be helpful if that did change, but currently, both groups define lunch as one of the highest risks for the spread of COVID.
Thank you both. Appreciate that. Heather, do you have any other questions? Rod, were you going to say something before? No? Okay. And I would just like to, to that point of, you know, Naperville, we just heard an extensive presentation earlier this evening showing the vast differences in funding from one district to another. All districts are not created equal. I thought that we had made that abundantly clear in that presentation. So again, can't compare, it's not comparing apples to apples. So, thank you. Appreciate that, Dr. April and team. And we'll jump back up to 12.02, Board of Education report. Wilco?
Thanks, Kevin. Sorry I had to step out. I had a building emergency. Wilco, we met on Tuesday, March 16th at 6 o'clock. First item we approved were the expenditures for the month of March in the amount of $50,342.24. We also approved our Assistant Director-Principal contract, our Assistant Principal contract, our Franklin Cosmetology Institute contract. We approved a summer rate for seasonal maintenance work for $16 an hour, and we had an extension of five days at six hours a day at the contractual rate of $50 an hour for 16 Wilco teachers pending the approval of the Wilco ESER II application. We also recognized some students that five followings, or four of our students have been accepted into the student-to-apprenticeship programs. Natasha Luchek from Plainfield South, Stephen Marino from Plainfield East, Tyler Love from Plainfield East, and Isaiah Alonsodo from Plainfield Central High School. The training dates are, will be later this month for the enroll in the apprenticeship programs. We also want to recognize our March students of the quarter. First up is Ayaya Hernandez, Business Logistics from Plainfield South, a senior. Next is Brooklyn Taylor, Certified Nursing Assistant from Plainfield East, a senior. Alexandra Crestel, Certified Nursing Assistant, Senior at Plainfield North. Daniel Sanchez, Construction and Landscape, a senior at Plainfield Central. Rachel Benadouris, Criminal Justice, a senior at Plainfield South. Emma Feltman, EMS, senior at Plainfield South. Ayet Kazmi, Introduction into Health Professions, a junior at Plainfield South. Emily Janchecki, Medical Assisting, a senior at Plainfield South. Quinn Samaraco, Veterinary Assisting, a senior at Plainfield East. James Ariano, Welding 1, junior at Plainfield Central. And Natasha Luchek, Welding 2, senior at Plainfield South. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Westphal. All right, jumping on down to item 15.01, Freedom of Information Request Status. Dr. April?
Yes, we received five Freedom of Information requests since last Board of Education meeting. One from Trevor Moore, a community member for materials regarding the Fourth Quarter Educational Choice Form. That was received February 24, due March 3, completed on March 2. Second, Jody Cohen, Pearl Publica, and Jennifer Smith Richards from the Chicago Tribune, for materials regarding discipline and diversity. That was received February 25, due March 4, completed March 2. Number three, Andrea Shabat, community member for additional materials regarding public comments received by email for the July 27, 2020 Board of Education meeting. That was received March 1 of 2021, due March 8, completed on March 8. Number four, Ben Marshall, community member for materials regarding extracurricular activity budgets and expenses. Received March 5, due March 12, completed on March 8. And number five, Michelle Colby, a community member for materials regarding classroom enrollments. Received March 10, due March 17, and completed March 16.
Thank you, sir. 16.01, announcements and scheduled activities.
We have spring break from March 29 to April 5, 2021. Election Day, Tuesday, April 6. There is no student attendance. And the students' first day back after spring break will be Wednesday, April 7. The next Board of Education meeting will be held remotely on Monday, April 12, 2021. First closed session at 6:30, public session at 7:30.
Thank you. We will not be having a second closed session, so I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Heather's motion?
Second.
Teresa's second. Charlie?
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.